Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, May the 1st, 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda and we have one addition and that's under correspondence, information from Koochin County.
Mr. Mayor, the-
City Administrator?
Thank you. We actually have two additions. You pointed out the addition under correspondence. We actually have a number nine which we've added to the agenda that we just passed out before the meeting regarding accepting a letter of resignation.
We have a letter of resignation to consider. And so with those two additions, your pleasure with the agenda and the additions.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the agenda with the additions. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Then move to the minutes of the April 17, 2017 City Council meeting. Pleasure with the minutes.
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the minutes as presented. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Then move to the resolution on payment of claims and the accounts payable. We have transfers to fund number 101, the general fund, from fund number 812 of the lodging tax fund, $344.51. Under the accounts payable claims, we have the City of International Falls regular claims at $183,625.51. Airport commission claims of $103,255.4. And airport commission terminal project claims of $808,675. Pleasure with the resolution on the claims and accounts payable.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and that approves the transfers and the payment of claims. Thank you. We'll then move to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time that's not on the agenda? If not, there'd be an opportunity at the end of the meeting also for audience participation. With that, we will move to the second and final reading of the contract ordinance number 962 to award a bid for the 500,000 gallon ground storage tank rehabilitation. The low bid is submitted by McGuire Iron Incorporated for $223,300. Costs are coming from Fund 403, the Reserve for Capital Outlay, Water and Sewer. Your pleasure with the second reading.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Droba to have the ordinance number 962 pass its second and final reading.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Question on the motion or the reading of the ordinance and the awarding of the bid? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. And contract for ordinance number 962 is passed its second and final reading and upon publication will become the law. Then move to new business. Item number one under new business is a presentation by independent school district 361 students and Beth Slutinsky as their coordinator of the Koochin Area Prevention and Education. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a couple things that I want to share with you. One is, this is what the mission statement and the vision for the Cape Coalition and our several core principles. So I hope that they bring you each a copy of that. Also, these are produced from Cary Park that one of the students will speak about. That I brought some copies just to show you kind of what one of our students will speak to that.
Thank you.
So my name is Beth Ann Slutinsky. I'm applying at- Community capacity to continue effective alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs prevention against after the pandemic ends. Increase involvement of underserved populations and reduce underage use- Survey with all the students sixth or 12th grade in February. At the end of this month, I'll be- All that underage alcohol is going to be, underage use of alcohol is going to be our main focus of this grant. But if we see that from the surveys with the students, if there's enough that surfaces, that will be also something that will meet coalition and- Also a community aspect that will be addressed by one of the students. The approach that we're using is called the Positive Community Norms Approach. This approach focuses on improving community health using the science of the positive. Science of the positive is a study of how positive factors impact culture and experience. Altogether, we are strong. Also have posters that will be put up in the schools shortly. Two of the posters, or two of the billboards, one we have in the Ray area and one we- Recommend a drive out to either Ray or Ray Bennett. Wonderfully, they're once they put it in it, I think it shows the essence of- Coalition was established called CAPE, Koochin Area Prevention and Education. I have the information cards of the coalition. The CAPE Coalition was established in 2015, actually one year prior to me starting as a PNI coordinator. Established to inspire healthy decisions. Start drinking before the age of 15. More likely to develop alcohol dependency later in life. We need to lead that usage to as close to 21. We can make a huge impact, not only with alcohol related, but it's also showed that mental illness, if we prolong the usage of alcohol, we also see less mental illness in people. I'd like this opportunity to introduce students that are members of the Spirit of Florida Land Youth Group. Patrick Adam Wilson, John Slutinsky V, and- Areas in our community are- We've visited two parks. Next week, we will be visiting two more. And students do pictures of a photo voice project that they are- I did a copy of some of the pictures that were taken at Cary Park. To focus on. Of all this collage of pictures that I showed, this is what our youth are seeing when they go to that park. It's a very beautiful park. But as you can see from the picture-
My name is Jordy Ann Slutinsky and I'm a 10th grader at Falls High School. And we have just started a project called Photo Voice and we will be taking pictures around the community of positive and negative influences. Pictures will be from our point of view and not the adult point of view. Once we have some pictures compiled, we will meet as a group to discuss the pictures. Our hope is to have as many pictures as possible to choose from. We will narrow down our pictures and we will have them printed out on various canvases and items. Once we feel we have enough pictures, we will have a showing of our project for the community to see, like in art gallery. We have brainstormed a list of the few factors we would like to focus on and hopefully, as we do this project, we will find out more that we did not know. Recently, we went to Cary Park and we provided a few pictures of what we see, what people there. We are hoping that providing a glimpse of what we see, the city will know that we don't want our parks to have graffiti and profanity written all over them. And then we will, and that we want to see them maintained. Thank you for your time. Actually, the positives that we see.
Thank you.
One of the things that the kids have talked about this gala that we hope to unveil next April, that these kids- One of the things that was brought out also at the youth academy was population.
Thank you, Beth, and thank you to the students. The event on April 25th, the dinner that you spoke of, I thought was wonderful, certainly a great event. Very, very much enjoyed Dr. Jeff Lincolnbach from the Montana Institute and his showing us about positive community norms. I thought that was very, very helpful and very great experience. Also, the recognition of the many students, I think, also was very, very positive. Certainly, having read over your seven core principles, very, very well done. And I believe that this program will very definitely change behaviors in our community. Very positive. Thank you. Other counselors that have comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I was present as well at that presentation on April 25th and I thought it was very well done. The message was very powerful. And I would like to thank the students that are part of your group for trying to make our community better and I really admire that. One of the things I would like to do is talk to you about, you know, promoting the pictures, the gallery, later. So we'll get together later. I have some ideas for you, so, yep.
Sadly, I was not able to attend. I already had a commitment that evening, but I promised, I was one of the things I really did want to go to. And hearing the idea of what you're seeing in the community, just so you guys, as young people know, because I'm old now, the reality of it is, we see it too. And it's not something that we like either. So if we can partner moving forward with the city, with public works, the community, because it's, as I understand it, this body's hope that the youth of our community can step in and make sure that those areas are kept up, because they're your areas even more so than they're ours. So I would love to see, moving forward through this project and over time, the youth being part of our recreation areas considerably more than they are now, because we can't police them 24 hours a day. And we would love for them to be policed by themselves, by young people saying that this is our park and we don't want it to be taken down. So I commend you guys greatly on what you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you again for being here this evening and you're certainly, you can welcome to stay or leave if whatever your timeline is. We do have some other items on here that pertain to the school, so hopefully you'll be able to stay for a few minutes. With that, I would move to item number two under new business and that's to approve the mayoral proclamation, May the 8th, 2017, as Buddy Poppy Day. Mr. Terry Randolph of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Been a long time since I've been this chair. I'm here to ask for approval for the City of International Falls to proclaim the week of May 8th through the 12th Buddy Poppy Week. Our main day for the poppies, we're going to assemble them here on this coming Wednesday and then the week of the 8th, we'll be out in the community, different businesses promoting them. And we ask for a donation. Everybody thinks we sell them, but there's a donation strictly, whatever the individual wants. Slight change this year due to the no mill shutdown during this week, like it has been in past years, but we'll get by with it pretty good. We did pretty good last year and Counselor Droba was involved in that and I think we did pretty good. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, council's pleasure with adoption of the proclamation declaring Buddy Poppy Week in International Falls, May 8th through the 12th.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson to adopt that proclamation. And I think it's a great proclamation. I had one question and I don't know that it's, I think it's correct the way you have it, but in the very last sentence, it says, "I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence." And I'm not sure that I understood what mute evidence was.
Silent reminder.
A silent reminder? Okay.
That's what, to be honest with you, I missed that word. That's what I would take it, you know, in silence, silent, just a memory of our, of the ones that passed on and everything.
Very good.
Just solemn reminder is all it is.
Do you think silent would be better if we could take the liberty of-
There's always next year.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion by Counselor Jacksaw, second by Counselor Pearson to approve the proclamation and the publishing. Questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Proclamation is adopted and will be published.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the good work of the Veterans of Foreign Wars.
They keep trying.
You're an institution, Terry.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
Just one person doing what he likes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Item number three under new business is to accept the donation and approve installation sound system at Cary Park Arena. Mr. Sean Kelly of the Recreation Hockey Association.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sean.
I'm Sean Kelly and I'm a student of Fall Fair Hockey. And this past winter, we received a donation, a memory of Dick Doherty from the family. Hockey board decided what do we need around the park that we could use the money on? And we decided that we would like to put in a new sound system at Cary Park. The old one, I'm not really sure how long it's been there, but the speakers- Monkey around a little bit and it's in tough shape. Chords, others. So we got two quotes and we got one from James Bush- Evol Enterprises and kept it down Ewald's, um, quote, $1,489. This system is going to have four speakers out in the arena area and they're outdoor speakers, so they should be able to handle the cold and the moisture. There will be a speaker in the reception area and then that are speakers. Wanted this system to not be a real, real spendy one, but we wanted it so you can hear the national anthem clearly. Also, if there's tournaments going on that, you know, they play the music in between the top of the pod or in between the periods. Looking for approval to have Donnie Wold. I've checked into it. He is a licensed installer and he's insured bonded and so- No expense to the city. Look up, somebody can meet Don there and open the door, turn on the lights and-
Council's pleasure then with accepting the contribution by the Recreation Hockey Association and Dick Doherty on the sound system for, a new sound system for Cary Park Arena.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion. Please.
So I have a question. So the money gets donated to the city and then we just pay the bill as it comes in?
Actually, we already have the money and I thought we would just pay-
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Accept the donation of the money is the way I read it, so.
The City Administrator, mind-
Mr. Mayor, I would say that because it's a city facility, that the appropriate process would be is for the Rec Hockey Association to donate it to the city and then the city would make payment to Don Ewald for the quoted amount. I do have a copy of the quotes from both firms and one was significantly higher than this, so this is the low quote. But I think it would be more appropriate for the council's motion to accept a donation from the Falls Rec Hockey Association and then authorize the work to be done and will include the payment in a future claims form.
That Rec Hockey would make that contribution. One question I would have, Sean, is there going to be any type of recognition of this contribution by Dick Doherty and the Rec Hockey?
Yes, rec terms up here in Maine. And then I'd like to also thank the city and the city council over there at Cary Park Arena and we appreciate you guys working. Happy, we really appreciate the new-
Thank you. There's two, probably two significant improvements to the Cary Park area. One is the new boards, as you just spoke to, on the outdoor rink. And also, they just completed installation of new LED lighting inside the arena. So hopefully, it'll be brighter and less having folks not being able to see as well in there.
It's costly too, LED lights.
Yes, less expensive, yes. So we have the motion by Counselor Briggs, second by Counselor Jacksaw to accept the contribution from the Recreation Hockey Association of $4,489.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to add one thing, if I may. Maybe you could, we should have a letter of thanks coming from the city as well. So although the thank yous are covered by the Rec Hockey, I think we need to.
That would include a letter of thank you to Rec Hockey and the Doherty family? Further discussion? Could call a question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Contribution and installation are approved. Thank you. Item number four is to authorize the sixth grade classes to paint the street catch basins using watershed stencils on May 25th through 26th. Matt, is that-
Ken, did you want to start?
Go ahead. Oh, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Please.
Hi, I'm Matt Gwynn and I'm a member of the Brave Lake of Woods Watershed Board. And we're proposing a bi-national storm operation with schools. Proposal is that we're going to have- Part of that education. And holes that will be painted. And painting of the castles next to the- I had said that there's a ordinance that says that we can't have anybody painting on the streets. I'm probably guilty of painting on the streets at one time or another for my work, but Ken- One of those kids to-
Please, City Administrator?
Thank you. Just to add a bit more information, I did include in the pack, I had a copy of section 7-30 that talks about only city staff painting any color on the street sidewalk or curb and gutter for any purpose. I did indicate in my cover memo that we'll have cones around these particular areas. The students in the streets will have reflective vests. We're trying to have appropriate signage for safety to inform the vehicles traveling up and down the streets that this work is going on, so we'll take all appropriate safety precautions for this. The proposed routes that will be, where these stencils will be placed at the catch basins, there's roughly 38, based on Matt's research with some other people that are involved. And they'll be going from Cary Park Arena all the way to the Falls High School on 11th Street, then also doing 15th Avenue between 11th Street and the Falls Elementary School. So that's the area that will be affected. In addition to doing the stenciling though, the students are going to be taking garbage bags with them, picking up some of the litter from the spring and so some of them will be picking up litter or whatever else they might find along the road edge. And then they're also going to place door hangers on the adjacent properties, doors to just inform the public about what the stencils mean and what they're doing it for. And so it'll also be a little bit of a public education campaign as part of this effort. So that's also included with it. Just based on what the ordinance language is, to number one, promote the event and make sure that the council is fully informed about it. We're also looking for a motion to just authorize this work to occur on either May 25th, which would be the primary day that we'd like to see it happen. But if weather doesn't allow that, we'd do it on May 26th, the following day, which I believe is Thursday and Friday towards the end of the school year. The city will also be involved. I'll ask the Public Works Department to get the street sweepers out on the route so we can make sure that the road surfaces are as clean as possible so that we can ensure that the paint will last as long as possible. So we do have some other involvement and we're encouraging the council to move forward with the approval.
So the, as I understand, the approval would be to waive the prohibition of ordinance number in section 7-30 with regard to painting on the street?
That's correct.
And would that be for one year or are we looking for multiple years?
For just this project. It's a one-time project. And the other point I'd probably like to bring up is that we're doing it in concert with the Town of Fort Francis and so it's a bi-national effort and that was included in some of the background information. And so we're really happy to partner with the Town of Fort Francis and both work together to try and improve the stormwater quality going into the Rainey River and surrounding
High school and- By the industrial technology. Those stencils can be used year after year if- Those stencils can be used year after year if.
Thank you, Matt. So, a motion to waive the, in the code of ordinance, Section 7-30 and would allow the painting of stenciling on the street with regard to cleaner river for the community?
I'm all about cleaner rivers for the community. I'll move on it.
Motion by Counsel Doba to authorize the sixth grade class then to paint the street catch basins?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pearson? Question? Please.
So, this fits right in with one of the League of Minnesota Cities classes that I took and it's funny because Brian even saw the book sitting here on the desk. And it was, it's written by Peter Pekigma and his whole thing is, is try to find areas in your community that you can make happy, make light. And I think this is a great project, but with that being said, put, and you guys do it any way you want, but be creative with it. I realize that it's to try to just make sure people aren't putting garbage and bad stuff down the drains, but be creative with it. Try to make it so it sells our community. You know, the river and trees and whatever it is, this is what he calls a bright spot in our community. We have an opportunity to do some painting and make it just a better place when people walk by, they don't just see, oh, it's a drain, you know, now it's something to look at. I know that sounds really ridiculous, but it really makes sense long-term.
So, to that point, in school, the shop class, you know, with the students. Putting in the drain stencil and actually making. Go into it, the actual wording, and I don't know if you're trying to copy the picture, but it says, don't always drain. So, you know, the students are being engaged.
Absolutely.
In painting at water pools and sixth grade class is the class that will be out painting in stencil and before each class starts. Stormwater and how, what we put down the drain affects our drinking water, our lakes, what we swim in and that kind of thing. I mean, it sparks creativity, you know, these would be pretty nice and I think the kids will be proud to do it.
Excellent. I think that's great.
They could wear Super Tree costumes or something when they're doing that. Creative effort, right?
And Fort Francis, you know, they have a little contest with their kids to see what. For Francis, they go to school a month longer, so they have a little more time to work with us, but. Teachers involved and they've done a great job and.
Thank you for doing this.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried. Thank you to Matt and to Ken and the sixth grade class for this great work. Move to item five and that's a approval of a license renewal for Dollar Tree, number 3694, for a fireworks license. Motion by Counsel Briggs to approve. Seconded by Counsel Doba. Discussion on the motion or the license? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried. License for fireworks is approved. Thank you. Item number six under new business is a residential and commercial building advisory committee recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor is the council liaison to that residential and commercial building advisory committee recommendation. I'm bringing forward their budget for this year's citywide garbage pickup, let me, garbage collection. Let me give a history. Last year we did four of these and we decided to break it down ward by ward so that we would be in total control of the situation. The last one, however, we did a citywide and we're comfortable doing a citywide. So we're changing our plans from last year from four to two, one on June 17th and one in September. We will finalize our plans for the September one after we see how the June one rolls out. Some of the costs in the budget that you have a copy of would cover both of those events. So our plan is to do a citywide neighborly cleanup and it would be, take place on June 17th from eight to noon and at the high school parking lot. And we would set it up like we did last year, which would include a station for tires, a station for batteries, a station for white goods, a station for electronics, a station for household garbage, a station for brushing, a station for demolition. So we have it and we do that in a circle, semicircle. The city's, the county's waste management site director, Wayne Fuller, has agreed to help again and his help was invaluable last year. He really explained to us what we needed to consider and he was, held our hand and he was present at the event and donated his time for those Saturday mornings. He has agreed to do that again this year. Wade Friend has agreed to donate his time, his staff and his equipment as well. In addition, we have a donation from the Koochin County HRA of $300 to help defray the costs. In addition, Beth Listinsky's Spirit of Borderlands students have agreed to help us at the site on that Saturday and we'll be looking for other volunteers, too. So we rely on a number of people to help us and city councilors as well. Brian Briggs helped us with his truck, was very generous with that. Harley also participated. Did you bring your truck? I don't remember.
No, I don't know with the kids.
Okay, I can't remember. Anyway, so we, it's a great event and we are going to be looking at maybe doing some more intensive work with particular properties. I'll be looking to confer with Harley and Brian and other members of the council if they choose to be involved with this, as to what we can do in that area. So what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the acceptance of the donation or accept the donation of $300 generously proffered by the Koochin County HRA. And secondly, to authorize a budget and that budget sheet is presented to you. I went two ways on this budget. One would be if we did flyers, if we did colored flyers, it would be more, a little more money, or if we did grayscale flyers. So the budget is presented with two amounts. In addition, now last year Wade Friend paid for the tipping fees and I think they were $154. I built in $600 into the budget because I wanted to consider that this is the second year, it'll probably be more, there'll be more participation and so I don't want to be caught short. And then the Friends said they could help with that, too, if we ran over, but I wanted to ensure that we did have that covered. The $600, last year we went door to door and hung out flyers. It burnt everybody out, okay? So this year, for $600, we can deliver flyers to every household in the city. That would be the postage. That's $600 for postage, $600 for tipping fees. Add is 110 and then what, the flyers. Also, and while I'm mentioning companies and the community spirit involved, I want to mention KGHS and KSDM Radio for agreeing to put forth some PSA announcements, so I really thank you for that. And so, the question before the council is which amount would you approve, if any, but I, you know, okay? And so I'll make a motion as the liaison to, a two-part motion, to accept the donation from the Koochin County HRA and to approve the budget, which, I don't have it in front of me. Can you read it to me?
$1,315.80?
$1,315.80, yes. $1,316.
To that amount?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Counsel Jacksaw to accept the contribution from the Koochin HRA and also to expend up to $1,316 for the cleanup of the city. And just one question, well, maybe, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Briggs. What fund would that come out of?
The general fund?
The general fund, all right. Just want to be sure that we have it designated.
Yeah, I would, I don't know, you could argue it's economic development in the way that we're beautifying our city, but. I don't really care what fund it comes off of. Mr. Administrator, do you have a preference?
We talked about taking it out of the same department that we did last year and we checked into that. I don't have the, when you looked at it, what? Last week.
Housing inspection and, okay.
Okay, you've heard the motion and it's received a second to accept that contribution and approve the expenditure of 1,000, up to $1,316. Your discussion, Counsel Doba?
I totally love the idea and the plan on this. The $300 accepting that, that is a no-brainer for me. I don't, I don't know if I agree that we need to mail out a flyer to every house in town and kind of based off of the conversation that we've had on, we definitely have areas that we need to target. I think my thoughts on this is if we were to put an ad in the paper, which we do have an ad in the paper for the community, and we were to target specifically blighted areas that we know we need, I think we could lower that budget and I'm not worried about the $600, that's not my issue. But I don't, I don't think that we need to mail to every house in the area. We have, we have specific areas that we need to focus on more so than an overall blanket of the community. I do understand where this is coming from, but I don't think that that's the best, the best route for the money.
Mr. Mayor? I think that if we do take a different tact with the ads, then we, whether with the flyers, then we may need more ads, you know? And I think your, your thought on this is, we need to pursue. So what I would, I mean, we need to discuss what your, what your vision is here and we're having a meeting on May 23rd, I think, and I'll follow up with you. I think that's the date. But because, I mean, I think one way or the other, we may need up to $1,300. And can we iron out the details of, would it be okay with the council if we ironed out the details on the tact we take on advertising and approve a $1,300 budget or is that too indefinite?
No, I have no problem, I have no problem with the budget. The budget makes complete sense to me. My thoughts on it are, we don't, we know where the problems are in our community and to throw a blanket ad to every house, there's going to be houses that we know that they're going to be going to in areas that are very clean and don't have as many issues, you know? And I just think that we could go farther with less money if we were targeting a specific area, which is something I think we've talked about even with the long-term planning of our community when we're looking at our. Apprehensive plan, you know, we do know that we have specific areas that we need to focus in on, so I'm fine with the budget, that's not my issue.
Okay, can we approve the budget tonight and then you'll be at the next meeting and we'll work out the details. One of the things I would say as a caveat is the, it is important to the entire community, otherwise you will have some problems with that in and of itself. I think the other thing I wanted to say is that Betty Bergstrom has generously agreed to, on our water billing statements, a notice will go out on there on the next water bill. So everybody who, everybody who has a house in the city should have a water service and if you have a water service, you'll be notified of the water and sewer service, you'll be notified of this.
Your data, your next meeting is the 25th?
Well, I'm not, let me double check. I'm not, I think it's May 23rd is what I think, but I'll let you know, I'll email out the council on that. So we have two, we have two things. We want to reach out to the entire community and make this a special day for beautifying our community and then we do want to look at troublesome properties as well. How we allocate that budget, greater minds than me right now. I think if we have Brian and Harley there and the rest of the committee, we can come up with a good solution.
Further discussion? I would take just a slightly different tact. I think that it's worthwhile to send a flyer to every home. I don't think it hurts to remind everyone of the cleanup and the community beautification, so I would support your plan that you have right now.
Well, I would say, let's have a full discussion. I appreciate your vote of confidence, Mr. Mayor, and we'll hash this out later.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried and the contribution is accepted and the budget is approved for the community cleanup on June the 17th. Thank you. And then we need, we need another motion then to authorize the Public Works Department to assist with the curbside pickup of white goods and that would be by calling City Hall. And would that be included on the flyer?
Yes.
Okay, and so I think that would be helpful to have everyone get a copy of that, too.
That's why you really need a flyer, because this is a little involved and you've got to inform people, so.
So a motion then to authorize the Public Works Department and that would be a Monday through Friday cleanup?
Right. Last year, I think we did it the week before, Monday through Friday. They could call in and then if they, they have to call to make an appointment, they cannot just put their white goods on the curb. They have to call in and then we contact them and with our volunteers, with the city crew, they go in and pick up. They, we also have a white goods site disposal site on that Saturday at the high school parking lot. So I'll make that motion that we authorize this.
Okay, motion by Counsel Jacksaw to authorize the Public Works Department to assist with the curbside pickup of white goods?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pearson? Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried and the authorization is approved. Thank you. Further, under the cleanup? Thank you. We'll move to item seven, Mental Health Advisory Committee request to use Smokey Bear Park for a picnic on May the 25th. Counsel Jacksaw?
Yes, I passed out the flyer that will be distributed around town for, on May 25th, for the May 25th event at Smokey Bear. This is the second year, last year they did it at Smokey Bear Park. So we're asking. So, we're asking for, I'm a member of that board, so on behalf of that board, I'm asking that the city once again allow the mental health community picnic to be held at Smokey Bear Park. We'll be having hot dogs and potato chips and...
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the use of Smokey Bear Park for Mental Health Advisory Committee to conduct a picnic open to the public?
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs.
Mayor, please. I would just point out that the hours for the Mental Health Month Community Picnic is four to 6:00 PM. On the agenda, we put 5:00 PM, so it is between the hours of four and six on May 25th.
Okay, note the hours would be from four to six. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried and approval is given for the use of Smokey Bear Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Item number eight under New Business is to approve the hire of the 2017 summer part-time employees. List is in your packet. Motion would be in order to approve the students for work in the city.
So, move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the hiring? Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried, and approval for the hiring is approved. Thank you. Item number nine under New Business is a letter of resignation. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, it's, I really with regret have to just inform you that we received a letter of resignation from our finance officer, Katie Hole. Her family's going to be relocating sometime this summer as a result of her husband's work. I did distribute a copy of her letter of resignation, and you can see from that that she's interested in working with us perhaps through the end of June to assist in cross-training some of our existing staff in an interim period. But we're also asking that the council authorize us to initiate the hiring process, to fill the position, and potentially use the services of a recruitment firm. Part of the reason for asking for a recruitment form, a firm to assist is the position is one that there isn't a lot of people out in the workforce that have skills in public sector, finance, and administration, and accounting. And so, we're hoping to get a larger candidate pool if we potentially use a recruitment firm, so we want to have the option of doing that. I know the city's done that in the past in trying to fill the position that I'm occupying right now, and I would probably solicit a proposal from that company to move forward with helping us with the hiring process for a finance officer. But I, you can tell from the letter of resignation that she's very sad, and I, you know, I think this isn't anything that she expected, and they just worked out with her husband's, where he's at with his position, that his position is essentially concluded, and they need to relocate, and will be relocating. You can see she's been very appreciative of her efforts that she's put in here, and we're really, really going to miss her because she's done an outstanding job in helping us work through what we need to do with our bank reconciliations and other monthly activities that she does with our finances. So, we're sorry to see her leave, but we need to move forward, and so, we're looking for the council to, of accepting the letter of resignation for her to continue working through the end of June, and then to allow us to move forward and try and fill the position.
Okay, motion would be in order then to accept the letter of resignation from Katie Hole and authorize the Administration Department to initiate the hiring process, including a recruitment firm.
With regret, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw?
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Question on the motion or the resignation?
I have a couple of things. Brian and I are on the Human Resource Committee. One of the things we originally wanted was a full-time finance officer, and we ended up with a part-time. So, what I'm wondering is, should the Human Resource Committee meet and discuss this position again? And go over how this worked out so that we can apprise ourselves of whether we need to post this as a full-time or a part-time?
We can have the Human Resources Committee meet. We had budgeted for a full-time position initially when we filled this, and it would be our intention to advertise a position for, in a full-time capacity.
So, you, we don't need to revisit this?
Not from my perspective, but we can if you like.
Well, I guess, why, I mean, you can't, it's hard to find highly qualified people who are willing to work part-time. Most, you know, most career-oriented people want to be full-time. However, from a budget standpoint, if it worked out with part-time, why are we hiring full-time? I guess I got to ask that. And then, one of the comments I would like to make at this point was, it was delightful to hear your city, Deputy City Administrator Betty, talk so enthusiastically about how well the office was running. And now this happens, right? But it was, seemed like everything with Lisa and, you know, it's really been a great improvement, right, with your new team there. Not that the old team wasn't great, but, you know, things change, and so, I'm very sad that this has happened. Seems like we just get our legs and something happens, right?
She's an excellent member of the team. She's worked in very well with everybody. She's, kind of came with outstanding qualifications. She has a master's in accounting and a CPA. So, you know, I don't anticipate finding somebody necessary with those qualifications again, but we're hopeful, and it's desired, to have a CPA. That's part of the reason why we're looking at and suggesting that we use a recruitment firm to try and help us find somebody. I do know from talking to people in that trade that it's difficult to find people for local government positions as finance directors or finance officers, because there's, there's just not a huge pool for people that have those qualifications. The position being occupied on a part-time basis is really to accommodate her, she wasn't able to work full-time, but we wanted to try and be flexible and bring her in because of the qualification she brought to the position, and so, we've, you have some of the duties and responsibilities, but we, you know, our interest would be moving forward for, in advertising, to fill the position full-time. If we can find somebody on a full-time basis, that's strongly what our preference would be, because there's clearly the work to...
So, there were certain lacks with this schedule that you couldn't get done.
I'm saying that we moved the duties around to other people in the office to accommodate a part-time position for her.
Well, I would certainly echo the City Administrator's. I recall here in the past couple of years, both Herman Towne and Proctor advertising extensively for folks in that capacity. And I think if you look at the, the larger community newspapers, you'll see that there's always positions at even private businesses looking for someone in the accounting fields. It's a challenging area to fill. Further discussion? Thank you, we'll go to the motion then, the letter of resignation, and the administration is being authorized to initiate the process with the capacity of a recruitment firm. Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried, letter of resignation is accepted. With regret, thank you. Anything further under New Business? Not, we'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple informational items. We did receive a letter from Nathan Hybel, the Land Commissioner for Koochin County. They provided a, a list of tax forfeit properties for us to review. My intention is to pass that list on, we'll look at it at a staff level to see if there's some reasons why we might want to have those for a particular public purpose as a city, and we would have a shot of acquiring those properties because of their status as tax forfeit. But I think what we want to do is look at it from a staff standpoint and see if there's some public purpose that we may see for any of these properties that are available, and then work through the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee to see if there's some reasons to move forward with acquiring those on a, for a public purpose, and then make a recommendation at a future meeting for the City Council to act on. And so, we have 60 days from the date of their letter, which I believe is April 17th. So, we see that. Also, for your information, the auditors were here and worked with our staff for about a week's time period on the audit, and they anticipate having a draft to us by mid-May. And when we receive that draft, I'd probably like to work with the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee to schedule a meeting where we can have a committee of the whole to look at the audit findings and then have a discussion, perhaps a conference call with the auditors about any of their findings, and we've done that in the past, and then having it on a subsequent council meeting to accept and submit to the state not later than June 30th. So, we've got that moving forward. And a final informational item is last week, I believe it was, we received some additional monies from the North Koochary Sanitary District to put into, to help us cash flow paying for their payroll. So, we've done that, and over time, their salaries have gone up a little bit, and so, we've got additional monies deposited into their account to cover their payroll expenses until... I don't have anything further.
Questions for the City Administrator? Thank you, Ken. City Attorney?
No special report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Maston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. I think you have my April activity report for the police department. In there, you'll see that we had our firearms qualification training this month, and you'll also see that the officers of the department were quite busy in the community presenting a number of different topics, so a lot of community outreach there this, this... Our alcohol compliance checks around the community. That's underway. We've got a task force executed a search warrant resulting in the seizure of one of suspected methamphetamine, and one individual being taken into custody off of that warrant. As far as our calls for service goes, we had three hundred calls for service, eighty-three traffics, seven medical assists, eighteen arrests, and we generated ninety-eight ICRs, total five hundred and sixty-seven. Not much different than last year, the numbers are pretty...
Very good. Thank you, and to all of the officers for your involvement in the community activities. I think that's very, very helpful, and certainly will make an impact on citizens as we go forth. Questions for Chief Maston? Thank you again for your report and good work. City Administrator, are you covering the, for Chief Manasa?
I can, Mr. Mayor, he could not attend tonight, he was attending the school board meeting this evening. But for the month of April, the fire department rescue and EMS, in the month of April, they had fi, or eight fire department call-outs, and that's where the full department was paged. One of those was for a city response. You can see that there was one commercial fire alarm, and the chief and the assistant chief responded, and then a smoke scare. There were seven rural fire department, or rural fire area responses. One of those was a house fire, there were two grass fires, one water rescue, two motor vehicle accidents, and then one fire alarm. The chief responded to a carbon monoxide alarm, actually two of them, and then there was three CN train fills that we had done on the month of April. They also conducted training and had regular business on April 20th, and their training was related to pump operations and truck operations, and they had an extra training session on April 11th where they did a controlled grass burn in conjunction with the Minnesota DNR. And there is a burning ban on presently because of drought conditions, so as far as I know, that hasn't been lifted as yet either. Ambulance calls for the month of April was a total of a hundred and six. Seventy of those were 911 calls, thirty-six were transfers, and that compares to about a hundred and four in 2016, so it was very comparable numbers. And the ambulance department also had a monthly meeting and training on April 12th, a regular business meeting. And then, as you can see, there was a pancake fundraiser on April 29th, and it was a good turnout, and the chief was very appreciative of the job well done by those who participated and the public's participation, so. Have any questions? I can pass those on to them, I probably can't answer them, but...
For the pancakes?
They were fantastic. Sausage was good, too.
Thank you, City Administrator. Good report on the fire department and ambulance. Move to reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Some garbage stuff again. Okay, the meeting is May 16th, I just looked it up, at four. May 16th at four. I was off a week. So, and then the other thing, following up with that is, Steve, if you could, we need to talk about a particular property that we were going to partner on around that time. Okay? And then, the other thing I have is that franchise, the PEG Channel, received a forty-thousand-dollar grant from Otto Bremer, received a five-thousand-dollar grant from Knutson, received a two-thousand-dollar grant from Midco. And your, your, it is your franchise, city's franchise. We have a employee, well, we have a contractor, and his name is Gary Conan, and he's been present at many of the meetings that I used to film, he's filming, I don't know if you've noticed, but he's been there. I thought I'd just update the council on that. The Cable Commission, I received a communication from Midco, there is a group of residents, there's some residents in Aspen Way who would like to have cable television, and so, they're working on seeing if they can bring cable into the Aspen Way neighborhood. Let's see, what else do I have? I guess that would be it.
Thank you. Other committees or boards or commissions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Drowby?
I think we need to have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting just to kind of move forward for our budget, and as Ken had pointed out, we definitely need to look at our audit from this year, so I would like to set a date. Ken, do you have a time that would work for that company?
I think we were, we, I don't have a firm date when they would have it to us, but they were talking about mid-May, mid to late May, and so, we were going to wait till we got it or found upshot. I don't have a firm date. Typically, what we've done in the past, just to save costs, is we've had a conference call with them versus having them come up. First year, they came up, and it's, they're based out of St. Cloud, so it's kind of a hike, so we did it via the phone line. I can check with them and get back to you if you'd like.
Well, and one of the reasons I want to have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting is, I don't know if people have looked at, but in the Journal on Saturday, there's some stuff going on at the school board meeting this evening that directly is going to relate to our budget, depending on how they move on the rec department. So, I think we need to look at that along with some of our other budget concerns going into the next year, and kind of wanted to do this a couple of weeks back, but we had a city councillor that was out gallivanting across the world.
Wonder who that was?
So, I'll get with you, and we'll see if we can hammer down a date, and then I'll send an email out to everybody.
Is the time of day particular, I know Keisha works, you work, is there?
I?
I guess you work.
I hang out.
Yeah.
Afternoons seem to work really well for, for me.
I'm okay, except for mid, mid-May, that's all.
Mid-May is bad for you?
Yeah, I've got gambling training, mid-May, so I cannot... Yeah, I have gambling training mid-May, so I cannot...
Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, Mr. Mayor, while we're planning meetings, we do have some follow-up work at HR to do, which regards training. And so let's get that scheduled. You're going to be around, aren't you?
So, the end of the year.
Okay.
So I'll get with you, and we'll hammer out when we can do that audit, and I'll send out an email.
Okay. Other committee reports? I presented my written report, but just to draw your attention to a couple of items. One, the presentation by the Super Bowl Legacy Committee, I thought was certainly outstanding. The application that was done by the Pennies for Play, ACUS was very, very significant. Certainly, you never expected that amount. Thought that was tremendous. The second thing is that the League of Minnesota Cities had sent out an item with regard to Post File 1242, which is, would require city councils to give 10 days' notice considering any ordinance. So in addition to having our two readings, we would have, if we were going to consider an ordinance, we'd have to give the public 10 days even before we have the first reading. So that would add significantly, probably making it a month to six weeks to adopt an ordinance. The league is opposed to that. I called Representative Eklund with regard to that this morning, and he was voting against it, but wasn't sure whether or not that was going to carry or not.
And we should also email them, the rest of the council?
Well, I think they were voting at 1:00 today.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know where the, what the vote was, but we'll find out.
All right. Thank you for doing that.
What are the audiences? Anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Not, just a couple of notes under the correspondence. The item that was added was the, from Cooching County Land and Forestry, the letters that the city received, I believe it was a total of about $38,000. Trying to remember what the, what that amount was. And certainly, yeah, 25,000, 20, maybe 28,000. Excuse me. Well, 25 there, but there was another 2,000, and another... I think it's about 28,000 that we received with regard from Land and Forestry Department activities. Just wanted to note that.
And where does that money go? What fund does that go into?
More than what we budgeted, is it Fund 8?
Is it 8 or 9?
No.
An economic development fund that goes into, no? Okay.
Have to look. I don't want to say it.
City cleanup?
Yeah.
With that, the next regular city council meeting is Monday, May 15th at 4:30. Anything further to come for the council? We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.